This came in, still snowing.
Nate kinda looks like a comb head. Does he even know what a comb head? Are you old enough to know what a comb head is?
It's supposed to get really cold this weekend and you gotta get your water.
This is awesome.
That's sweet. Comes to support the husband. I told him it's live stream, so now they're not saying anything.
Did they get my letter that I signed and sent back in, you know?
I don't check tomorrow. I still have an idea, so.
Did Wendy tell you guys Grover Green County has their, I'm gonna call it a meeting three, because I don't have the paper in front of me, Thursday night, where we got over and they kind of tell you a little bit about the stuff and you're welcome to go, you just need to contact Wendy so that she can say that you're going if you plan on going.
We'll get like as a city from their products.
Sure. It's just like Shirley wants to do with me, but we have to let them know.
Yeah, I, I think it's like six, call, call Wendy, probably not tomorrow, I don't know if she's gonna make it, but check with her, because she has all the stuff that I just sort of know.
Tell us your fishing truck, Jerry. Didn't you go to Costa Rica or somewhere fishing?
I guess we could.
Did you catch a lot of fish?
Well, my boy is.
JR?
Yeah, he got, he's had a place down there for six, seven years.
Gotcha.
And he got a couple of shrouds. He's trying to do it cheap.
I got it.
We called him off the fish.
Throw him back.
No.
I just asked him.
No.
I don't care.
We butcher him. He, he stayed down until one or two.
Five fifty-nine, we worked on this last month. The owl will not work and it was like bottom, but we have a new core, so. From when I've been pulled.
Thank you, Brandon. Don't be mean. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, hold on, if I can stop you for just a second, if we could just take like thirty seconds here and just a moment of silence to show our support for the people of Perry and the grief that they're going through. So we can just give them a moment, please.
Yeah, it's kind of a bad deal. Okay, I need to approve the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
I got it.
I'll second.
Need a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Public comments. Some public comments. New business. Vote on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero eight dash zero one. On reconstruction of the waste water treatment facility improvements. Fixing the date for a hearing and taking bids. Uh, was even.
Boltman and Maker.
They weren't coming over.
No, they were supposed to come today and they have.
To discuss next step in the sewer project.
Boltman and Maker are supposed to be coming, they have packets for us to read over, he was gonna explain it, but with the weather, we said, let's just fold up. Um, I think we can go ahead and vote on this resolution. Um, this is just the next step that they tell us to do and they were just getting it better.
Gives us the start of the whole thing, so that we can start taking bids for whatever we do. We gotta have this resolution.
So.
Do I have a motion on that? You understand what I was for, like for the sewer, the sewer plan.
Jake.
I made a motion to vote on resolution twenty twenty-four zero one zero eight zero one.
I second. Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, the next one, vote on additional funds for the sewer along with the root cutting. As you know, when they did this, they ran into some humongous roots. We got booked with six film hole sewer. There's places they couldn't get through, so. Uh, this is to have, get more funds.
And.
To, to do the root cutting and, uh, and it will be added on to the same big sewer improvement deal.
Yes, at the last meeting, there was a question whether we were gonna have to pay it out of our general fund or if it could be added on, and Wendy found out from them that it can be added on to our loan, which is a better deal for us right now, because then we don't have to come up with it.
I make a motion, we vote on negative on the sewer on root cutting. Second.
Aye.
Discussion and vote with one forty-four CHI representatives will be requesting ten percent of the city's Grover Green County funding for their housing project. Do you have anything on, on that?
I guess I'm the representative of issue or killer. Derek could meet the, make the meeting because of the weather. Um, just wanna recap. Uh, the project is very successful. We had twenty-five total projects that were approved. Uh, of that twenty-five, twenty-one were completed, and those are the ones we expended the grant funds to. So of the twenty-one, sixteen here in Grand Junction. Four were in Peyton, that was their allotment, four, four. We didn't do as well, we're working on that as we go into our second year. But of that sixteen completed projects, that total grant awarded amount of our funding was thirteen thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents. And as the projects were presented to us, the total amount would be going toward that project and that property on. That resulted in a total improvements of two hundred fourteen thousand and seven hundred eight dollars, so. We were pleased with that. Um, we are now in our second year, so we're asking the same communities in our one forty-four quarter, Ripley, Dan, Grand Junction, Peyton, to again consider allowing ten percent of their disallowment coming from Grover Green. I know those funds are awarded at some point, um, I think the checks are written by July, but they actually make that determination somewhere around April when they cash out the, cash out is a bad word. Well, Wild Rose has taken Wild Rose Jefferson and the financial account people have looked at their, all the money's that have come in where their, where that available funding is to go off to, uh, dispersal through Grover Green United Foundation.
Nothing's worked out good. I, I know four or five projects have looked really nice, a couple of buildings were built.
Laura and I talked to Derek also, and one of the things that he said, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but one of the things that they hope to do in the second phase is they're gonna start looking at, um, cleaning up some properties, like some of these abandoned houses, taking over that. They hope to work possibly with our Betterment Committee and maybe between the two of them, be able to get some of these abandoned rundown places and work together, so that's hopefully what some of this money is gonna be on.
Partnership, that's what we've been hoping for all along, so I'm so happy to hear that, that's a discussion at the table, so yes, we're very much wanting to do that. And I know we've had that Betterment Committee in place, Dean's involved, is that correct, others? I remember years, a few years back, when Larry Cook was here at the table, when we council and with the bank, he kinda worked with Dean, Jeff Gore, Josh Delar and some of his involved scene. There are others, the communities are making some really great improvements. I think overall, we're doing well, we're in the right direction, but I would hope you can consider again allowing ten percent of that roughly forty-three thousand dollars to go to this, uh, program, uh, which would be about forty-three hundred dollars. Because we did spend the forty-three hundred dollars that you gave us. And all the other money was allotted to us.
And so for the new people that don't know, if all we get is twenty-five thousand from Grover Green County, it's ten percent of that, so it's strictly based on, on what we get.
If we're always available, if you have any questions, I'm at the library, Kirk's just across with the bank. There's a.
So improve the looks of the town and help the community and increase the tax base.
Well, I think, I think it helps us also on our overall engagement with larger portions of what would be called Green County. Rather than being one individual town trying to dial off in the middle of our county seat where there's so much representation on board, so dispersing funds and so many individuals from Jefferson. And it's fair, they're, they're asking, you're getting, but when you put four towns together, which is like more than half the towns in the county, they're actually incorporated towns, then you got a little bit more cloud at the table.
That's good. Do I have a motion on that?
I make a motion, we vote on the one forty-four CHI represent, uh, Grant.
I'll second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and vote on applying for a grant for a new marquee sign and new signs outside of town. You guys are up on that.
Essentially, Paul and I have been looking at being, got some bids for new marquee signs and the progress for places possibly, um, a couple of urban signs here in town, and we just need to get the approval. Go ahead and write the grant and see what we can find.
One of the things that we, we hope to do besides the marquee sign are a few signs showing that, hey, this is Grand Junction. The one on Highway thirty across from the motel, the double-sided big billboard needs replaced. So this is just a sample, but I don't know if you, I don't think y'all can see it. I'll just get a close look and tell me when we got to closing it, but this is kind of what we thought.
Can you see that?
Just so, um.
See, so you guys are here.
That's just what we're kind of thinking, but basically now we just need, um. Right now, we're just asking for approval to write the grant and go from there.
I make a motion, we approve, we should write the grants. Second.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, yes.
Okay, discussion and vote Lions Club in the final round, so Summer Fest applying for a grant on the new shelter house project. And you guys probably have, I don't, maybe it's in the packet or diagram, it looks like, I saw it.
I don't know, I just know that, I know that was the last meeting and the one before that, we approved to let them put in, put the building where the old schoolhouse was. They have to get approval from the county to apply for the grant, just like Laura and I had to, so.
I assume that's what this is all about, that they can do with it.
This, this is just to apply for.
Right, so.
What do you, you got a name?
I think it's. By the summer fest, uh, allowing them to apply for a grant that shelter house.
Second. Aye. Aye.
Vote on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero eight dash zero two for funds for electric, water, phone slash internet and gas. Fire department and the light.
Yes, what that is, um, in researching somewhere before I was even on council and Wendy wasn't here, before county, um, in whatever process, they started not taking those bills that should have been taken out of the fire department's budget, they were just taking them out of the general fund. And the same way with the library, they were just taking them out of the general fund, they weren't taking them out of their budget. And from twenty-two to twenty-three, that totaled up to about seventeen thousand dollars out of our general fund that should not have come out of there. So I make a motion, and this is mostly, everybody is aware of it, and actually the fire department and the library thought that it was being done, it, it just wasn't. And so all this is doing is just creating a paper trail for us. So I make a motion that we vote yes on the twenty twenty-four zero one zero eight dash zero two to take the electric, water, phone, internet and gas out of the budgets of the fire department and the library, like they should have.
For expecting units.
Yes, yes, they each get their own bills, but now it's been established, that's where it comes out.
My second. Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and vote on revising the switch time policy in the employee's handbook.
I don't know if it was true or change. In, in charge of what?
It's timely. Get in four sick days a year, is what the employees get. Um, and I, I think, again, whether we vote to do that right now or not, I think that we need to reevaluate that. Four days is pretty quick. Um, typically, in some of the other places that we have checked, um, they also can use sick days for a child or immediate family member sick, you have to take your husband or wife to the doctor or your child or whatever, you can use one of your sick days for that. Uh, does anybody have an opinion here?
I was thinking about one. We might have had one day of, of, one day a month. You know, told me, you ended up twelve days a year sick leave and you can.
Was it for the year, you mean?
Well, that's more I, or you were, when I was.
So tell me this, Jake, then do you just start off with twelve days and you, you have to accrue them?
Yeah, accrue them.
So if I've only been here two months, I need to take four days, I don't got, I don't have it.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, you were kind of lax on that.
Yeah.
Four days, four days a year doesn't seem like very much.
It doesn't, no.
You know, when you get sick, you know, you're not just gonna get over a day or two.
Can you bring it back to everybody that you're? Um.
We didn't feel the, the, oh, super.
Does, does anybody feel like they want to go over and read this and kind of think about it? Feel like standard and have thought of? I mean.
Even, like, ten years ago, I get. Each got three years, you know, all, you know, here or there. Um. Soon after you started it.
I, I.
This went into effect, you know, I don't, I haven't worked before.
I did check with Ogden, just because I know the city clerk's over there, and their full-time employees receive paid sick rate at four hours per paid period for personal sickness for a total of thirteen days per year. Um, they have an accumulation of sick time as a hundred and twenty days. To me, that's way too much, I mean, that's, you know, um, and then it also tells in here that, um, if you're, you know, sick for more than X amount of days, then you really need a certification from your, a note from your doctor saying, yeah, you really were sick and this is why. So what are you guys thinking? You wanna think it over and come back with some ideas or?
I mean, I guess I really don't know. I guess at work they give you three days a year.
Three days a year is what you get.
And you use it or lose it.
Okay, there's no accumulation. Can you use it for like family?
Yeah.
Okay.
It might involve vacation, yeah.
Okay. Got an opinion, Spencer? No opinion, okay? Jake?
I, I think four days is about enough.
I, I mean, I agree with that too, that four days ain't enough. I mean, with the pressures of the illness that are on, I don't.
Right.
I just don't know what days, how many days is right, you know?
Right. And how many to allow to accumulate, and, and I think one of these said too that if you leave, um, no employee shall be paid for accrued sick leave upon termination or resignation. And I think that that's kind of a good thing, that way somebody doesn't, you know, rack up a bunch of sick days and then you get paid for that when you leave. That, that makes it hard on the employer. What was your question, Jerry? And that, that was a light plant. Issue there. With, and here's another light plant, um, if an employee is out more than three consecutive days, a written doctor statement must be submitted when they return to work. Weekends do not count as sick leave. Um, or they get four hours of sick leave per month up to a maximum of a hundred and sixty hours in case of personal illness. So.
I think accruing four hours of paid period. And then for a total of twelve days a year, okay? Then they could build that up, but I don't know what the max should be that you could build it up. And what's the max number?
Is it start over or you?
That's how you can accrue it for a max of a hundred and twenty days or whatever, ten days is, well, ten days is terrible.
Well, gets up to your max days, are you gonna let them cash it out?
I think that.
I think you can cash it out.
I don't think sick time, yeah, you use it.
Yeah.
I said, we, a few years ago, if it got up to your max, they'd tell you either you can use or they'll pay you, they'll take you unless you.
But what I see, what I think is good about this, I think we should be able to use it for the employee's sick time, or you can use it for if you have a child that's sick or.
You know.
Something like that, to care for a family, immediate family member, or dentist appointment. You know, there are appointments, you know, I think that is considered, it should be considered a sick day, sick time. Um, and I mean, you know, things kind of come up that I, yeah.
I guess.
But what I want, I don't know about. I want a doctor's note, I mean, because, you know, you just have COVID and you're gonna be out for more than probably three days, I don't know that we need to make that person go to the doctor and say, hey, I was sick, I was sick with COVID, because chances are they're gonna go to the doctor for no reason, other than you get a note saying, no, I was out sick. I think that's silly. Um, so.
Unless we see you out running around ten, you're out like the on TV at basketball games.
Maybe we should have our employees, just have spread the meeting with our two employees.
And let them decide?
Well, then talk over. Then come back and see.
Um.
I don't know, first it's an idea.
I guess my thought on this is whatever we give them is better than the policy they currently have. I'm not in favor of buying back sick days, because I think that that's just, um, a benefit of working here, that we will give you sick days and we will give you, you know, enough, enough sick days. I, I personally don't like the idea of buying back sick day. That's just. I think it's great if you're a big company and you can afford to do it. I don't feel like we can afford to do it.
Well, here's what's happening, full-time employees receive five paid sick days the first year, one, ten paid sick days each year from when they're active. So. Um, hours are just added every day. Which will be almost as far. Um, I, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this. We have some other guidelines. And Jerry, how about if you talk to the employees and get back to them what they're thought of our homes? And we can, next month.
And then you guys too decide what you think is, is fair, and certainly, I mean, if you, if you think it's fair to buy it back, present it, I mean, just because I don't like the idea doesn't mean everybody, you know? I know, to, to buy anything back, pretty much.
Something does give up, so a hundred and twenty days.
Right.
That is, that is a incentive though, you know, if you don't use it, you know, you get paid for it, but that's the way to, you know, keep people to show up to work all the time, but, but then a lot of times, you know, if they're sick, they'll still come to work, it is illegal.
So, yeah, so they get the money back, and I mean, really, we've got two employees. So. Think about it.
I just make a motion, we.
Okay.
Hey, Derek, good job. First of all, I want to make mayor, new mayor.
Okay.
Eight, we're moved.
You have to read it? Go ahead and.
Say, okay.
No.
Employee evaluation, vote on pay raise.
Yes, Wendy's evaluation was supposed to, her year of employment was, um, in November. We decided to wait until now to do it, so we need to do an evaluation and, um, talk with her on it and then vote on a pay raise. If she was here, she was, um, I had talked to her, she did not want it on live stream. She wants it private, which is her choice, so if it's okay with everybody, we're gonna wait until after all the department reports are done, and I'm explaining this so that everybody in TV land knows. But we will do the department reports, then we will go into a closed session for this evaluation. We'll get Wendy on the phone so that we can do it, and then we'll discuss it. We will come back, vote on a pay raise or no pay raise, whatever, and then the meeting will be done. That way we don't miss the mayor or council stuff on live stream, because I totally cannot restart this thing once I shut it off, so. That will, wait, is everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
James is gonna be the new mayor of Grovetown. Also, I'm reappointing Pat Fagan to continue on the whiteboard with the approval of the council next meeting. Does the council have anything on?
I do, um. I have been working, Laura and I, of course, are on Park and Rep, and National Grid Renewables, who are the solar people south of town, um, I have been in touch with them this summer, thanks to Caitlin Gannon and Michaelson from over at the courthouse, suggested we get in touch with them to help pay for some of the filters from, for the swimming pool, because we needed new ones, and right before Christmas. And right before Christmas, um, I had been in contact with Tom Karas right before Christmas. Doug Wester, who is the next highest up on the ladder, um, said they really wanted to help us and it was gonna take five thousand dollars to buy the rest of the filters that we needed. And so they sent us a check of five thousand dollars for the rest of our filters. So, um, we had, and also, um, the ethanol plant Taz out there, I believe Janice has said his name. They ordered some, um, for us from out there. Home State Bank gave us a donation. The supervisors, Fauch Agro Services gave a donation. That was all just for the filters. So because of all those people, got enough filters, were, were ready to go. So thank you to everybody who. And thanks to Janice and Fuzz for all that they do and for Janice getting right on that too.
Street maintenance, one officer, do you have anything?
Uh, just possibly investment for the drain cover and chow. They're starting to cave in for it. Open the city shop. That drain cup.
Now, these kind of major structures, it must be three foot by three foot square. The cement needed to cover a hole. So instead of buying one, you just build a form, you have to put it in there and fill it full of cement, letting it care. And that's what we're gonna do it ourselves. So. Of course, he's all ready for the night. Got a snowplow and everything and shake both of them right for. Do you have anything for the library when you're here?
Just speak to a library board member today. She said, please ask the city council, street employee maintenance to make sure we get the sidewalk cleared from the library after the sound and some collins. So we'd appreciate that. Thank you. That's all. I have some, uh, I put these down on the table. I've got some really nice calendars. We're just reading. We have.
Again, Jason brought in.
Yeah, he, he dropped out of the fire department.
This, at this time, we're going to go into closed session.
Yes. Step in to discuss the employee evaluation. Man, did you have a thing Perry, you were setting a fire in this area with them?
I'm sorry. I, I was hoping to get into the discussion on the grant application, but I'll give you. Will that be, and will it be a letter to that fact then that we can, it's listening?
It'll be in the minutes. So if you need a copy of the minutes, just ask me. They'll give it to you for it. Yeah. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're going into the closed session.
Happy to be here.